We've got extra documents here, so we're gonna read those. Sort of read of these. Okay, good evening. Sorry for the delay there a little bit. We were reading some more documents that was supplied up here. So I would like to call this Planning Commission of Monday, August the 19th at 7:00 PM to order. And the first item is called to order.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Here.
Commissioner McKenna?
Here.
Chair Hancock?
Here.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Here.
And Commissioner Morris absent.
So the first item will have approval of minutes. Has anybody got any comments on the minutes?
I have a comment. If I can find my... For the May 13th meeting, I was in abstention. I wasn't there.
Could I have a minute proposing acceptance of the minutes? I'll propose acceptance of the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Me.
Commissioner O'Nines?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't given the minutes until two minutes ago. The police department handed me the wrong packet.
Commissioner McKenna?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Okay, and we've got changes to the agenda. I think it was, we were adding a continuance to the agenda that's not written up.
So this, the first item on the agenda was continued from the August 5th meeting.
Is it? Okay, changes. So then item E, we're going to do oral and written communications. Anybody in the public has asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. This is specifically on items that aren't on the current agenda. So Jenny?
Jenny Blaker, 8166 Arthur Street, Catati. My comments are about both the items together, so I just wanted to make sure that I can speak to them. I wasn't sure if I should do it now before you start or when you're on item one or two, but I can't disentangle the two.
If you're up there, do you want to just speak to it then?
Right, okay. I did circulate a letter earlier on, and let me just, sorry, let me just get back to that. Apologize. I wasn't expecting to do it right now. Okay, so first of all, these are huge decisions that you're making this evening on some very big projects that are going to affect Catati and the neighboring area for a long time into the future. I don't believe that you've been given nearly enough time.
Sorry, if you could just speak to the...
Okay, thank you. I don't believe that the Planning Commission or the public have had nearly enough time to do due diligence to this project, particularly the one relating to the assisted senior living memory care unit and associated cannabis dispensary. The documents were released on Thursday evening, and even if you could have, even if you could have spent the entire time from then until now researching and reading the documents, I don't think you could have done an adequate job. So I really would ask that you be given at least 10 days to review all the materials for projects of any kind and more when there's so many complex historical background reading, documents, EIRs and so on, to read and understand as well. Also, the reviews, review process has been speeded up since the end of the Design Review Committee and the transfer of its responsibilities to staff in February this year. That means one less layer of public and commission oversight and five fewer people reviewing the project in detail. Also, the staff at City Hall has completely changed since the South Sonoma Business Park project first started, so everyone at City Hall is learning about these projects from scratch as well. The assisted senior living memory care unit is being treated as if it's part of the South Sonoma Business Plan or linked to it. I saw a comment that said the EIR for it was tiered from the South Sonoma Business Park, EIR which was dated 2001, but that is on a completely separate site west of Alder Avenue. It's a brand-new greenfield site in terms of development, and it should have been covered much more thoroughly. I know there was a mitigated negative declaration with a 30-day review and comment period. I'm afraid I missed it because I wasn't in the country, but I'm also wondering how many other people missed it in July when so many people are away on vacation. So I think that project should be looked at from the beginning and not tiered from the South Sonoma Business Park, EIR of 2001, which is, it was a huge document, about two inches thick, created 18 years before this particular proposal was even considered.
If you could start to wrap up.
Okay. Cannabis dispensary is a whole other thing that should also have much more thorough review, and we should look at the pros and cons of other dispensaries locally and in Catati. I also just, well, actually I could...
Perhaps you could speak to those when they actually come up.
I'll just see others when they come up. Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to our, is there any more public comment? Anybody else would like to speak to items, not on specific items on the agenda? So I'll close public comment, and we'll go to matters at hand. And the first one is the review of the Catati Commons, which is a continued from last, last Planning Commission. So if I could start, have staff speak to that. So the process that we'll actually be going through here is, first of all, we'll have the House staff, the staff report, and then afterwards, the Planning Commission will ask questions of the staff. After that, we'll open it up for public comment, and when the applicant will go first in that period, and then we'll close it and bring it back to the Planning Commission. So if I could have staff to go first, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hancock. I just wanted to identify that since the item was previously heard and discussed on August 5th, staff has received a comment letter from the neighboring property owner in support of the project. Staff has also proposed one additional condition of approval, which was provided to the Commission on the dais and the public. The applicant has been made aware of that and is in agreement of that condition. So I just wanted to identify that before contract planner Jim presents his, presents for the city.
Thank you, Noah, Chair. Oh, thank you, Chair Noah, Chair of members of the Commission, Jim Carney. My understanding is that we're not going to go through the whole presentation again tonight unless it's the Commission's desire to do that. We went through that last meeting two weeks ago. Would want to move forward to the recommendations if, if that is your desire, and then we can discuss a couple of things that have happened since, reference to what Noah just said about comments that have come in and some changes we've made to the conditions, if that's okay to go forward. So I'm gonna just skip forward, unless there's something you'd like me to stop on, we can get to that point where, just to review a little bit, at the meeting on August 5th, there was a hearing with presentations from staff, the developer, and the comments made from the public. The Commission held a comprehensive discussion on the project. Questions and dialogue regarding the past sequo actions, ultimate roadway configuration, management of parking and trash collection, and potential installation of electric charging and photovoltaic systems were elements of that, of this discussion. The Commission then continued the item to tonight, August 19th, meeting, the meeting night date, to address an error that happened with the noticing. So here we are tonight. In response, staff has re, has provided expanded access to the past sequo documents on the website and in this report, and was adding several conditions of approval to the preliminary design review resolution to address Commission concerns. At this point, if there are any questions, we could go over the recommendations or, from the, from the Commission.
Any more questions?
I'm, I'm concerned that we did, at the last meeting, we did Matters at Hand number one, and I'm surprised now to see this Matters at Hand number two. That hasn't been discussed, that hasn't been agendaized, that nothing's happened to it. It just seems to have been stuck on there. We didn't discuss it last week.
So these are two separate public hearings that are scheduled for review. Matters at Hand number one is the continued item for the Catati Villages, or the Villages at Catati Commons. This is the presentation of that. Staff will be presenting a separate presentation for Matters at Hand, item two.
So, so there was a set of documents on Friday that was completely separate for the neighboring property to the west. So if you, if you didn't get those documents, I guess, you're gonna be following along. But anyway, this will be dealing with the first part, the first section. Any questions?
So I have a question just about process. If we had suggestions or things we wanted added, changed, do we need to repeat those again tonight?
So staff tried to capture all the comments and additional conditions requested by the Planning Commission. If we failed to do that, we're happy to address it, or if new comments or concerns have arisen in the meantime, obviously this is the time to voice this.
So procedurally, if it's in the minutes from last meeting, then it will become part of the, what will be happening with the plan?
Actually, no, the resolution was modified to include conditions of approval from the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And I'll give you the page number where those can be read.
That'd be great.
So I think this is the first part.
This is our packet.
It's a thick packet. So this is what I see, this, this one, 225, but there's, it does get complicated pretty quickly.
So on Commission Packet 140, conditions of approval 53 through 57 were added in response to the comments from the Planning Commission. And specifically, they addressed trash enclosures, street names, electrical panel modifications to allow the installation of EV chargers, and an encouragement from the Commission to install photovoltaics on each of the deed-restricted affordable housing units.
So can you just go through as well the resolutions that we're going to be looking at this evening? Because I know we have a number of different resolutions, and particularly resolutions from different years that can be a bit confusing. So if you could just identify the page numbers where they start. I know I had notes in my old packet, and so thank you very much for the repeated packet, but...
So the only resolution before the Commission starts on page 125?
Okay, good.
And that's just for the preliminary design review. And I absolutely acknowledge that the, the history of this is causing some potential confusion. So there's been a lot of past decisions. The subdivision was approved through a vested tentative map that then benefited from a number of automatic extensions from the state, and then the City Council most recently extended that map again. That resolution's identified in the package before the Commission as by reference, but the only action before the Commission is preliminary design review. However, it is the final step that will allow development of the site, as was ultimately envisioned under the Village at Catati Commons project, which does include a number of past actions by the City.
So any, any other questions? I've got some questions. You've got to go ahead.
Yeah, I have two follow-up questions from last week, and it's just a point of clarification. I see here that the, back in 2005, the Design Review Committee had raised two issues that I found of interest. One was that utility boxes should be located underground, and the other had to do with the residences being without enough private outdoor spaces. I'm just curious if either of those have changed since that discussion happened in 2005.
So ultimately, those concerns were brought forward as a part of the recommendation for approval from the Design Review Committee. Staff has not identified any specific utility boxes on the proposed plans. However, that detail is typically, or is often designed at a later time. So if the Commission had that concern, they could obviously add that condition to encourage underground utility vaults rather than above-ground boxes. Some of those decisions are made by the utility companies themselves and outside the, the control of the developer. And then separately, there is a, a park proposed to serve this project. In addition, there is another park, or an expansion of that park identified on the adjacent parcel. When that property moves forward to develop, there is an agreement currently in place that requires additional park land to be constructed. But so that, I believe, is how that was addressed during that previous discussion. But you are absolutely correct, that was a concern identified.
Thank you.
So, so I've got a question about the general roads, because this is a big complicated process that we're going through here, and particularly with respect to Highway 116. We've got some dedications that are happening there, but we've got some advanced planning that's also going on. So in that roadway, the general plan calls for some traffic calming measures to be along that road. Have we got sufficient dedications for, for the range of traffic options that Caltrans might require on that area? That would include, you know, we've got roundabouts identified in the general plan, but that could be, sorry, we have traffic signals identified in the general plan, but there could be other options, including traffic roundabouts that could be more appropriate in the future. So in terms of the dedications, have we got enough rights of way?
So there are significant amounts of public right-of-way being dedicated as a part of this development and the adjacent development. I would look to the Public Works Director just to provide general feedback on the amount of dedication and the potential future public improvements.
Thank you.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Craig Scott. I'm the Public Works Director, City Engineer. So the, there are a set of plans that Caltrans prepared to widen Highway 116 to four lanes, and we have that information available to us, and that has been reflected in the dedications as made part of this project. And so those dedications accommodate the eventual widening of the, of Highway 116 to four lanes. And then there, the, the traffic signals are, I believe, also part of those widening plans.
Okay, good. Thank you. We, we've also got some statements about undergrounding utilities. What is the voltage of those electricity lines that are running along the road?
I don't have that information. Typically, we would work with the utility department, or, I'm sorry, public utilities, so PG&E in this case, to identify the needs for what it would take to underground utilities, and certain high voltage are typically not able to be underground. I'm not sure if anyone at the dais, or I mean, at the staff table has access to the specific voltage of the utility lines currently there.
Because it's not on this item, but I think it's on the next item, but probably applies to this. I think it's basically saying that if they're over, under 25,000 volts, they should be undergrounded. So that might be something that we look at. I know that all new properties would be undergrounded as, as cause, but if, it would also, would be nice to plan for some of these, or at least maybe that's my question, is, is should the, are these being planned for? Are they over 25,000 volts, in which case they would not be in this plan? But if they're under 25,000 volts, we've made a statement.
So the City does absolutely plan for that, and we have a underground utilities district mechanism that we've recently adopted. I believe it was recently adopted or exists currently within the City that allows us to essentially move overhead utilities into underground infrastructure, subject to their voltage, because that is kind of the cutoff for the utility. Now, just allow the Public Works Director to chime in.
So, so just to clarify on that point, the City's municipal code has the requirement that overhead utilities are, are all put underground along the development front edge. There is another mechanism that is, that the City can use for, versus, if it meets certain criteria, like there's a scenic part of the town, an entrance, or some part of the town, like around this train station or downtown that has special value, and then we, PG&E collects, since 1960, in the 60s, has collected a proportion of every one, the citizens' rates as part of Rule 28, and that fund is about $900,000 right now, enough to underground about a block. It doesn't go very far. And so the City could, would, would need to go ahead and form an underground utility district, and then make those funds available for that location. And we're, we're really not contemplating using those funds for this project.
So really, we just need to do some homework on that to understand from what we've stated in here, that those utility lines, so... Okay, that's a question. Any other? Okay, well, I will close the, the Planning Commission's questions here and open it up for the public, invite the applicant first of all to come up, and then it'll be open for the rest of the public. And I see Jenny's got a hand up afterwards.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for having us back. Thank you again for your time this evening. It was nice to see you two weeks ago. We went through the project with a fair amount of detail. We received your comments and suggestions, which staff incorporated into the, into the plan. So we're available for any questions. There are a couple of things that we just wanted to make sure we clarified tonight. I forwarded a copy of a letter from October 2015 from the City, which went through the conditions of approval that had previously been completed. So again, this project is a, is a approved project. It was approved in 2007. It's situated with a vesting tentative map, and the action before the Commission today is simply to renew the design review permit, which had lapsed, I guess, two years after 2007. So in 2015, we worked with the City, and we developed a list of conditions that had already been satisfied. Many of those were satisfied by the building of the Lowe's project and other projects. So there is a list, which we've provided to staff. I've got extra copies if you'd like to see it. So those conditions have all been satisfied. There are also a number of other conditions not in that letter that have subsequently been satisfied, environmental conditions. I can read those off to you just for the record. And I think we'd like to make sure we get that into the record. So condition 107, condition 108, parts of condition 109 and condition 110 were all satisfied much earlier in the project. So we'd just like to make sure that in your resolution tonight, that we acknowledge that. The only other thing I think that we've discussed with staff is a modification to one of the resolutions that was, I think, one of the, one of the Planning Commissioners mentioned. Are there other conditions that are on the, on the list of 130-some-odd conditions? And now I suppose there's another 20 or 30 being added, which we understand, and we, we're happy to live with those. There is one on condition number 30 that talks about the timing of the completion of the commercial buildings. And that, that, we would ask to modify that condition slightly in order to better finance the project. Right now, that condition requires of the three commercial buildings, the first building to be...
Would you have a page number for that?
Let's see. Okay, this is, I'm not sure on your packet. This is Resolution 0726.
It's page 151 of the packet.
Okay.
So this is a past resolution that has already, okay. So you're just pointing out that these have been enacted in the past or resolved?
These, correct. These were enacted in the past, and as the Commission asked last a couple of weeks ago, among the many conditions, this is one that's particularly difficult with regard to financing. At the time the project was approved, this is before the economic meltdown, so this was in 2007, and of course, financing of projects is much different now than it was then. And condition number 30 talks about the timing of when the three commercial buildings would be, would be completed. As originally written, it said that the, the, the first building would be completed with the first residential certificate of occupancy. The second building would be completed at the 35th residential certificate of occupancy, and the third foundation would be completed at the conclusion of the project with the final certificate of occupancy. What we would ask the Commission to do would be to modify that slightly and ask for the first building to be completed by the completion of the 35th residential certificate of occupancy. We would ask that the second building be completed, the shell be completed as it states with, by the 40th certificate of occupancy, and the third building foundation to be completed by the final certificate of occupancy.
You're saying this is condition number 30?
Yes, it's condition...
Because that isn't, all I've got there is a reference to the 35th.
So the, the applicant is, is looking to modify those. The only reference currently there is to the 35th building. The applicant's looking to modify that, however, and staff is supportive of making revisions to some, some of this language to allow, ease the financing process. However, in review, this is a council resolution, and so...
I, I realize that, that was being put out there. So I think if we just will let, if you want to actually state this for the record?
Okay.
What you're doing, and, but I would point out it's, the council is a resolu, you know, is a body above us.
Sure. Okay, we can, I didn't realize that. We can take that up at council level if necessary.
But, you know, you feel free to put it on the record now.
Okay, I think I, I think I've done that. But other than that, I think we're prepared to answer any questions if they exist or from the public.
A question. So with the change of the trash enclosures to be larger to accommodate three bins now instead of two, does that mean there'll be fewer parking spaces?
I don't think so. I think there's sufficient space to be able to accommodate that.
Okay, great.
So I'll ask a question as well, slightly differently, I think, from what somebody asked last time. But in, in going around that neighborhood, one of the items I always look at is connectivity. How do you walk around it? And so, looking at the lot lines and how it currently exists, how do you see that people are going to be able to walk, let's say, over to what is currently the Lowe's site? Right now, they essentially have to get in their vehicles. Right now, they essentially have to get in their vehicles or go all the way around. So in the, sort of, the future, when you see all this coming together, we have, we have the park that is part of this, and I think in one of the plans I saw, there was a pedestrian access along the park, but that's not part of this project, I don't think, at the moment?
That's correct. This portion of the, of the project really has to do with the west side of that park. There are cross easements between the two projects that allow for pedestrian access. So ultimately, when the project is fully built out, then those pedestrian linkages will occur such that pedestrians can easily walk between components of the project.
Okay, that's, thank you. That was what I was sort of reading there, so it's up to the next project that we really, we've got, we've got it there penciled in, but it's for the next project that'll actually be coming along. Anybody else, any questions?
I do have a follow-up question. Understanding that this will be a decision taken by the city or, or the council, I just wanted to clarify, when you were discussing the timing for the first residential certificate, and how you guys would like to move that to the 35th residential, do you have a sense of what the time difference of that would be? I mean, is it, to get the first commercial space up and running, is that, are we talking months, years?
Yeah, we anticipate that to be about nine months.
Okay.
Maybe 10 months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll open it up for the rest of the, for anybody else in the public who would like to come up. So Jenny?
Thank you. Three things. Number one, I just was reading with interest the Monk and Associates' letter dated today with a response to the Fish and Wildlife, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I think that if you look at the California Natural Diversity Database, you'll find that California tiger salamander was found nearby this year. I'm not sure of the date, I'm not sure of the exact location, but I think it was around Hellman Lane, which would be within a mile of the project site, and they can travel that far. And if I can try to find out within the next couple of days if it actually was entered into the California National Diversity Database, and let the staff know. Second, since the site was graded in 2002 and mitigation has been going on, how successful has the mitigation been in terms of protecting or preserving the endangered species, California tiger salamander, in mitigation banks off-site? And the reason I'm concerned about this is because worldwide, biologists estimate that species are going extinct at the rate of 150 to 200 per day, largely due to loss of habitat. This is on a par with the climate crisis in terms of our world unraveling. It's all very well for us to talk about deforestation in Brazil, but what about the one species we can do something about here in our own backyard? Even though people think, may think that the tiger salamander is irrelevant, it's actually part of the chain, and every link in the chain that's broken is just showing that the planet's falling apart. I also don't think that only three people on the planning commission should be making this decision tonight. One has had to abstain, and one isn't here, and I think that is just not good enough. So, but the main thing is, I will try to get the information to you about the tiger salamander that I believe was found close to this site earlier this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, if you'd like to come up, and if you'd give us your name and address for the record. You don't, you don't have to, but...
My name is Gary Malone, and my address is 8017 Gramontstein Highway. I'm the neighbor of the property there. I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. I was a little bit concerned about the traffic part. I wanted to, a little more elaboration on what's going to happen with the freeway there, or the highway there. I know right now it's, it's very, very critical at all times, and you said there was a possibility that there's going to be a four-way, two, two in each direction, but is that a positive or not with this project? And it's something that concerns me a lot, because I have a couple of businesses on my property, and right now, it's, it's very critical with people getting in and getting out. Lot of very close accidents all the time. So that was, that was one of my questions. And another one, another concern of mine is the environmental impact on the property, because I know that there's a lot of flooding in, in that area, behind me, around me, and I'm kind of concerned that, with the buildup of this, this property, that it could possibly hurt my property more. So, a couple of questions that I'm very concerned about, and I'd like to know more about it.
Right, so the process we'll do here is we take your questions, I'll take all the other public questions, and then we'll ask staff to actually answer them. But yeah, if you've got any more questions, please, this is the right time to get them out.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I, my parents owned the property, they're passed, and I own the property now, and, and this has been since the 60s, so I've watched that area grow. I've, and they're, and addressed salamander, yeah, there's salamanders there, all over. I don't know if that's been in the report, too. I know that the fellow across the property, for, for me, wanted to subdivide his property, and he didn't pass a salamander report. This was a few years, 10 years ago or so. So, I mean, these are all, I'm sure, questions that have to be answered anyway, but they're just, I, just coming into this, I just got the, the letter to come tonight, so that's some of the questions I am concerned about. That's the main ones, yeah.
Thank you for the, putting the questions down.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Seeing there's nobody else in the public questions, I'll close that, and I'll bring it back to staff to ask them to address the questions from those two people. I think as what do you do if there's CTS that's been identified nearby but not in the report? What is the range that they should be identified within?
So our secret consultant, Olivia Urban, is here, and she can provide some specific input on the CTS requirements. Carrie, can we bring up this staff computer? And just to clarify, because these, there's two projects before the commission tonight, and they're very close to each other. So this is the Village at Catati Commons, directly in front of the existing developed site, and closer to Lowe's on the east side of Alder Avenue. And then I'll turn it over to Olivia before we answer some of the traffic questions.
Good evening, Olivia Urban, environmental planner. So the Catati Village site has undergone a number of biological surveys over the years, beginning, you know, predating when the Sinema Business Park EIR went into effect. And that EIR actually covered all mitigation requirements for removal of the wetlands on-site at that time, and all of the breeding habitat that was previously there prior to the grading that went in. There is a record of the Army Corps of Engineers signing off that all the mitigation for those, that habitat at the time, has been completely mitigated for. So there are, there's a number of records in the biological reports in the history of this project that document when and where all of those mitigations and the credits that were done. It included both payments into funds and, and actually creation and monitoring of new mitigation and off-site mitigation banks. And again, the Corps did sign off on those, so there is a record there that all of those mitigation for the Catati Village has been mitigated.
So again, this is the South Sinema Business Park area, and then this is the specific project site before the commission, which is here for design review, the last piece of this application, the subdivision and use permit were previously approved by the city council for this development. Getting into some of the traffic concerns, you can see Highway 116 there, adjacent to the current site, and this is the development proposed before the commission. It's kind of hard to see, but you can, currently here is the existing Highway 116 frontage, or I'm sorry, existing roadway. This is the proposed right-hand, right-turn lane that is, will be developed as a component of this site, and I'll ask the public works director to clarify for me. All of this is available for dedication to the city, for future widening, not to occur with this project, but a future time when Caltrans and/or the city deem this necessary. And then this is the ultimate frontage improvements for the proposed project. So it's significantly set back from the existing 116 corridor. There are traffic improvements that go in what we're calling interim, but are likely to be there for a number of years to address the traffic and safety issues that were identified by the commenter, and so hopefully that kind of provides some clarity. And the next presentation, we'll get into even more detail about what's to occur should this site develop and be approved tonight, and then I'll ask the public works director to chime in if I misstated or needs further clarification.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Noah. The, there's a family of improvements along the front, off-site, and it's, it includes that right-turn taper lane that Noah had described, but because Alder is going to be the entrance to this project, there is, Alder currently goes up, and it's, it's not optimal, so Alder will be lift, raised up, so it's more, improves the visibility of those making a turn onto 116. Also, there's a dedicated left-turn pocket for those going east on 116. So you get the right-turn taper raising Alder up, and the left-turn pocket, and a bus stop just to the west of Alder is part of that project as well. So that's a package, I called it a family, it's a package of off-site roadway improvements that would, that are being required in the conditions of approval to be implemented, to be installed as part of this project moving forward. I think one, one more, I think if I may add, there's, Noah had mentioned that there are long-term improvements that go into the widening, and we have, since the 2007 entitlement of the project, or 2005, I can't keep that, I think it's 2005, the city updated its general plan, and then as a result, to support the general, general plan, did a traffic impact fee study to say, okay, these are the roadway improvements that benefit the city as a whole, and so we need, this is a mechanism to collect fees from new development, so that, once the city has collected these fees, we can move ahead, and as a city project, do these certain improvements. And so the widening is, conditions are being satisfied by the applicant paying into the TIF, the traffic impact fee. There is a, an interim traffic signal at Alder that is being conditioned for, for the applicant to design, do a construction cost estimate, and that to pay the city the cost of installing a traffic, an interim traffic signal there. The traffic study that was completed for this project identifies the need for that traffic signal as being triggered within 10 years. So it's not upon the development of this project, but some, with, with just development around that area, it'll be necessary within 10 years. So we have a mechanism in the conditions of approval to collect, not only to get the design for it, but to collect the money for the city to ultimately construct it, and it's outside of the traffic impact fee, because it's an interim signal. It's not a signal that's identified in the general plan.
Yeah, if you could do the flood, and also bear in mind, I think we have two properties here, so we definitely perhaps want to bring it back, that question, for the other property, but...
So to address the flooding, there are a number of studies, sewer capacity studies, water capacity studies, storm drain capacity studies that are conducted, traffic studies that I mentioned. So the hydrologic study addresses certain, you know, 100-year storm, 20-year storms, and designs the storm drain system to, to make, to make sure that the, the buildings are kept above the 100-year flood event. And so you do have the, the LID measures, the, the measures to slow, sink, hold the water for low-storm events, but we can't avoid, hey, recognizing the impact of a large storm event where it's still the objective to, to express that water out of that development so that there's not property damage. And so the, the, the design of this project, the pad elevations, and the storm drains were all informed by this storm drain hydrologic study.
And it's worth noting that the, the design of that, that study informs the design of the storm drain system to capture all the water that comes off this site. So it's the, the intent and the design kind of mechanism to minimize any off-site impacts from stormwater from this site.
Thank you. Well, I'll bring it back now to the planning commission, and if we've got more questions.
I have a question. If you could clarify for me the traffic signal, the interim traffic signal, that would be at Alder and 116, and I think I heard you say that it could be anytime up to 10 years before it's built? Am I understanding you? Because I thought it was supposed to be built before they could start construction. Am I wrong?
It's based on what's called warrants, and so it's basically when the traffic demand triggers the need for signalization, the city has the funds and the study necessary to have it constructed when that's triggered. I think staff has discussed internally that we think that is likely to occur based on the amount of development that's proposed with the two projects before the city, but one of them may not trigger that warrant, so to speak. The other improvements, the turn lanes and the widening, to accommodate those, are to be constructed with the project.
I'd like to clarify that I abstained only from approval of the minutes. I'm not prepared to go with Matters of Hand Number Two, but I am...
So we're just doing Matters of Hand at number one at the moment?
I am prepared to go ahead with Matters of Hand Number One.
Right. So, have you got a question? So just again, on the stormwater, we have a very flat area there. NPDS requires us, the National Pollution Discharge System, requires us to do on-site management for, for a two-year average storm, so, so that's not a big storm, but how do we, I guess, looking at the plans and looking at the site, it really doesn't look like we have got a lot of, let's say, dual-usage areas. We have drains that look like they're just running off. We don't seem to have a lot of lead, low-impact development, ways of spreading the water out. So for a flat area, it seems like we're going to be putting a lot of hardscape in there, and then that water's going to run off very quickly. And this is a design review, so I think it's irrelevant.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, the city cannot approve a project that does not accommodate the NPDS stormwater management requirements, and with that, I'd turn it over to the public works director to answer any specific questions regarding this, the features, the LID, low-impact development features, which are stormwater treatment features on this site.
So the, the stormwater features were designed with this project and the Catati cottages project that's existing to the, to the north. And so there's a detention basin, basin behind Catati cottages that exists today that is oversized to take this flow, so that the runoff from here would take it to, just to the north where, where the word commons is, and it runs right along there, thank you. And that's designed to actually hold it for those two-year storms, and allowing it to settle into the ground and recharge, and also not to overwhelm the creeks for these events. So this, it was all sort of, the drainage was master-planned, if you will. drainage was master planned, if you will.
Thank you. So for the longer, because this again is a flat area and we have the Laguna behind it, and I know this has been an ongoing discussion for the last 40 or so years, how do we, how do people find out where there might be flood levels and how the Laguna at the back, if that backs up, how it might impact their properties?
Sure, sure. That, that information is available from FEMA on their website. And then anyone coming into the Public Works Department here, we have, we keep those FEMA maps too, the flood management area maps. And so what it'll show you is, there's certain categories of flooding. And it's best not to be in any of those, those areas to begin with. But it's very, very quick to see from observing those maps if a house is within or outside of a flood area. And so you'll see the Laguna de Santa Rosa and then an area around it, which is the 100-year flood boundary. And then along the creeks as well. So that's, that's published readily available information.
And some people, I think, property owners like on Hellman Lane, have actually built their houses up, it seems historically, some eight feet above the grade. There's almost some houses that seem to have, they've got the insight that they really need to build up in case there's any water comes underneath. That's just, okay, that's just my noticing. I'll just add that as a comment. Any more questions? So I'll, I'll bring this back to the Planning Commission. And I think we've got one resolution before us this evening on page 125. There's a lot of, lot of long-term history here. But from what, it's basically, it's a design review of the buildings and how they fit in. I will say that I went around the neighborhood this weekend and I just talked to a couple of people who were out there working in the garages doing things. And nobody had any feedback at all. They both, they all were pleased with their places and where they were living. Obviously, some concerns about what might happen. But that was just from the design review. I found the, you know, those buildings kind of, it works. It is, it is a high-density area. But any other thoughts or comments? So do I have anybody who'll make a motion to?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Do I need to read the entire resolution?
Maybe just the first part.
So I move to pass the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cotati approving preliminary design review to allow the construction of 43 residential units consisting of 37 small lot detached residences, six low-income affordable duet units, and three two-story office buildings for the South Sonoma Business Park Revision Project located on a 7.54-acre property at the northeast intersection of Gravenstein Highway and Alder Avenue. And with the additional conditions attached.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
So that's one big part of the packet. And we're now going on to the second part, part two, consideration and recommendation to the City Council for adoption and approval of a mitigated negative declaration, zoning code text amendment, preliminary design review, use permit, and a lot line adjustment to allow construction of a new 77,000-square-foot assisted living facility with 88 units, a 24,100-square-foot memory care facility with 34 units, and a 4,000-square-foot commercial building located in the commercial Gravenstein corridor zoning district at the northwest corner of Alder Avenue and State Route 116. Is there any more planning lingo that could go into that that hasn't? But would you like to lead us through it? And?
So Consulting Planner Jim Carney will be presenting this project as well. It's worth noting, this is directly west of the Cotati Commons project site, also fronting onto Alder and 116, but on the western side of Alder, same side of the street as of 116. I will also say, we received public comment letters today and also a letter from the project biologist responding to some of the concerns or potential concerns. The author of the SEQA document, mitigated negative declaration, again, Ms. Olivia Irvin is here to answer any questions. And the project applicant is also here.
Okay. Thank you, Noah. Jim Carney, Chair members of the Commission. The name of the project has somewhat shifted. So in terms of this presentation and staff report, we've been calling it the Townsend slash Sterling Senior Community, which includes a assisted, senior assisted care facility at memory center and as well as a commercial building on the site. It's, as Noah mentioned, it's on the northwest corner adjacent across the street from the project, the village project we just discussed. This one's a little bit harder to read, but I'll advance. There's an aerial view of the site. There is some older buildings. I'm sure you're aware of them, along the Reds facility, I'll call it that, and other, a couple of old houses and so forth, which upon, prior to building permits, those buildings would be demolished with a demolition permit. There's just a couple of views. This is on the corner facing highway and with Alder facing the highway 116. And then there's another house across the street from the Village Project along Alder, as well as some other properties in the back of the lot. This is a aerial view laying out the three buildings, the larger with the two, kind of almost two donuts attached there. There are the senior assisted care project and the, on the right are the center northeast corner of the site. And on the left is the memory care facility. They are connected through walkways and trellis system, provide shade and so forth. And parking is in front of, in the middle of the site for, for those facilities. Along Highway 115 is the memory, excuse me, the commercial building, which is planned for a cannabis business. It's 400 square feet. It was originally proposed as 10,000, excuse me, 4,000, what did I say? Was originally proposed for 10,000-square-foot building. It's a one-story building. So here's a one-site view. There's a corner proposed signage at the corner of Alder and 116. This is along 116. And to the left is the, let's see if I can get, over here is the commercial building and additional trellis and parking. And you can see the two-story structure for the senior assisted care. And then way in the back is the memory care facility. This is the commercial building along 116. And this is the view from the entrance, which is along Alder, opposite the entrance to the Village Project. Again, that's it. The colors and materials board, I don't see one here tonight, but it's very similar to the neighboring project that you, actually you saw at our meeting for the Village Project, very similar coloring and the treatment of the buildings and the other built properties in that neighborhood, immediate vicinity. So, and there were a lot of comments initially as this project went through several reviews that led us to these final proposals. Does, excuse me, it does conform with the general plan, commercial general, along, you can see that orange area along 116. The site zoning also is a, the Gravenstein Commercial District. We will get to one potential zoning amendment we need to get approved in order to allow residential care facility, residential care facility for the elderly. The use permit needs to be approved at the council level. So I'm just citing the, the code here. I'm not going to go through all the provisions, but just so you have that in your packet and have an understanding of what the project, use permit will be called out for this project. The, there have been a number of reviews of the application. There were four specific ones between January 2014 and this past February 2019. The project was declared complete in February 2019. And the design comments addressed, really had several along all of these four upgrades of the project, I call it that, updates of the project in response to staff reviews having to do with architecture, the size of the commercial building, the site plan, the landscaping plan, the parking design, and interim improvements of 116, of the 116 Alder intersection. Again, from the city code, in terms of the preliminary design review, I won't go through all the specifics. I know we're kind of running a little late tonight. But the final design review will be through the city's newer city administrative process. This last February, the city changed that process from the committee to the city process. So that'll happen after we go through this process. Just moving forward, the environmental review, initial study, mitigated declaration. It, I'll just go, a number of things happened there. We do have our, our consultant here, Olivia Irvin, if you have any questions on the, on the environmental document. But it did find that the project would have a significant effect on the environment that were mitigated to significant levels. And we do have conditions of approval that include the mitigation measures in the document as well for the project. So the, that document, the SEQA, initial study, mitigated negative declaration was posted on June 30th for the 30-day review. There were two comments, one from Caltrans in terms of letters and the Department of Fish and Game. And that's attached to your staff report. In terms of the staff, the summary and staff recommendation, the land use code identified this location as appropriate for mixed use of residential commercial development. Needs to be rezoned to accommodate residential care facilities, as I mentioned, in the CG zoning district. It complements existing cottages, homes to the northeast and the future villages project, as well as the marketplace development to the east. I will point out though, there was mentioned earlier that this particular site was not part of the largest property that included the marketplace as well as the village site. The Planning Commission is to consider all the proposed entitlements and may recommend final actions to council. Staff supports the project, subject to compliance with the conditions of approval. With that, I will hand it back to the chair if you want to have comments and so forth. And we could go through the recommended actions.
Yeah. Could you, could you just identify this process? This is a new process. This has also been very, it feels like very compact. I mean, is this what we are thinking? I know you're new on the, the process here, but there was a lot of discussion beforehand that has this reached out to the neighbors? Has this, you know, just that would be my first, if you can set the stage for this?
Sure. So this project has been in since 2015. I'm not certain that a notice of application or any type of pre-application meetings were held with the neighborhood. That's one thing I can do some more research on regarding if the city initially sent out a notice of application to all the surrounding residents or property owners. The, the process tonight, what's before the, the Planning Commission is a recommendation to the City Council on every element of the project. So that's a design, preliminary design review, use permit, lot line adjustment, and then the proposed rezoning to allow a residential care facility in the general commercial zoning district. What's somewhat atypical is that all of these actions, including the SEQA document, the mitigated negative declaration, will ultimately be decided by the City Council. The current process of the zoning code identifies that if any element of the decision needs to go to the City Council, then all decisions are brought up to the City Council level. And so because this is a rezoning, which is done through an ordinance by the council, they will ultimately be acting on all elements of the project, which includes preliminary design review. The change that I believe the chair is referencing is the fact that our two-step design review process, preliminary and then final, does not, no longer goes through the design review committee. So the committee was, was, if not disbanded, at least placed on hold with the idea that the Planning Commission would be acting on design review, preliminary design review, with either a recommendation from our design review administration process, which utilizes a third-party architect, or delegating the final design review to that third-party administration. So that the entire intent of that was to try to cut out some of the numerous steps it would take for one project to get to an ultimate decision. And so while the Planning Commission is still delegated with making the decision on preliminary design review, there is one public body, the Design Review Committee, which is no longer utilized through that design review process.
So, so the process that was being talked about though was, was that there would be an earlier outreach to the public and public, an informal public meeting that people could be informed, neighbors or other people could be informed about it. Did that happen with us?
Well, because this was originally filed in 2015, I can't comment or let you know whether that originally occurred or not. Obviously, any projects moving forward absolutely would go through that process. And this project did not go before the Design Review Committee that I'm aware of. It did not. So this is the first public meeting for this project. It is worth noting that the mitigated negative declaration process is fully public. Staff drafted that document, notified folks in June that the document was ready for public review, sent emails out to all parties who had indicated interest, published a notice, published a notice in the newspaper, on the city's website. The document's been available in the department. So we have been identifying that this application is moving forward. And in addition, it's listed under the projects, active projects list on the city's website.
I have a question.
Going back to Ms. Blaker's question about the EIR, was an EIR, the EIR that was done incorporated this, these, this parcel, these two parcels?
The EIR that was done was not done for the Reds property, for this property. It was done across the street for the South Sonoma Business Park, for where Cotati is. However, the reason that it's referenced in this MND is because there was a, a direct relationship between the CTS, that the California Tiger Salamander, that previously were utilizing the Cotati Village property that were migrating, historically were thought to be migrating across the, this property. And so that's why it's referenced. And there was, there's a history about DriftNet capture and monitoring that happened where a, a number of individuals were relocated in, under the, the regulatory oversight of the Department of Fish and Wildlife.
So a follow-up question then. Can you speak to if there was a California Tiger Salamander found on Hellman Lane within a mile of this property, this parcel, what would that mean?
It wouldn't actually change anything in this instance because this is a well-known area that has historically and continues to this day to support CTS. What I can tell you about these two properties in particular, and the one we're speaking about now, is that it has been well surveyed and that there's no record that there is any individual California Tiger Salamander that remains on site or has been utilizing the site. Nonetheless, because of the sensitivity of the area, it is treated as if there are individuals. And so the document fully discloses the potential for that effect. And there's mitigation that speak to if there was individuals, what would be required. So an incidental take permit would be required, monitoring and relocation of those.
I have some questions in regard to feedback I received around safety, specifically for a senior living facility right on Highway 116. I just want to start by saying, I think I just want to start by saying, I think the facility looks wonderful. I think the look and feel of it would fit very nicely in the community. And I fully support the idea of us bringing senior living facilities to the area. I think they're incredibly important. But with that being said, I do want to make sure that we have some conversation around the safety of having a community like this with varying community members who may need different needs or attention. And if there has been discussion around what safety aspects are taken, what do we look at when we're approving a new community like this in an area that wouldn't otherwise be zoned for this sort of community? And could you share with us what you've learned through the process so that we feel more comfortable with, with bringing this senior living community to the area?
Commissioner, that's a good question. I know there was discussion, and perhaps the applicant, Mr. Monahan, may want to speak to that when he steps to the microphone, but I think there was some perception that for the, there's two separate kinds of facilities. There's the memory care, and those, the folks that are in the memory care are people who have all kinds of mental health, or not mental health, but brain-related struggles. And they, if they do go outside, they're escorted outside with staff. So they don't just get to go out and wander around on or off the property. The senior assist is a little more independent, but they also have some guidance in terms of when they go outside. So there was some discussion about can they walk across the parking lot and go to the cannabis store, for example? And there is some, my understanding, the operational rules within the senior assist care property does, would provide that there's some kind of guidance and tracking of keep, you know, not just letting folks to wander out onto the property, especially along Highway 116. And, you know, I would defer to the applicant to clarify that if that needs to be further clear, clarified.
I would just add that a traffic study by a professional traffic engineer was conducted to analyze the potential impacts and issues with this type of development at this location. And that's where some of the recommendations for the street improvements are coming from is based on the recommendations from the traffic engineer.
I have a couple other questions, sorry. I wanted to get a little more information on page 272 in the packet. This is very thorough information. I appreciate it so much. Just more in layman's terms, if you could help me better understand item, under air quality, item C, exposure of sensitive receptors to substantial pollutant concentrations, is this just specifically during the construction period?
Let me just flip to where you are. Yes, so the SEQA checklist is specific to existing sensitive receptors that are currently in the area. So this would be, the nearest ones are the, the current residents at the Commons.
And could you talk through just a bit some of the mitigation efforts that are listed in here?
Sure. Yeah, so the Bay Area Air Quality Management District recommends kind of two different levels of mitigation depending on how extensive the construction activities are and how close residents are. So what you see here is both of those incorporated, given the proximity and the fact that this is a, you know, several acre site that will be graded and developed. So these range from watering the ground surface to minimize grading, making sure that higher level equipment is utilized to reduce exhaust emissions, those sorts of things. Do you want me to kind of expand upon it?
No, that's helpful.
Okay.
And, and then finally, I had some questions just about the tie between the cannabis dispensary and the senior living facility. I did, I did see that there was an estimate on approximately how many customers they anticipated the dispensary would receive. So I assume that they're expecting to get quite a few customers just from the public in general. I was just curious, since we have been working through this for a few years now, is, is the tie really that the dispensary is meant for the members of the senior living facility? Or does it just so happen that it, we're, we're putting this commercial space there for the public as well as the residents? I just wanted to better understand how those two go together.
So they are completely separate uses and processes. So the city council has approved a cannabis dispensary permit for this location, and the applicant intends to allow that to operate from the proposed commercial building. And it is a separate use. While there may be some senior customers living on-site, walking across the parking lot, it is not, it is not intended that that be the only source of their customers.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So you haven't received the documents at all? And yeah, we'll have to talk about that later, I think. So the questions I've got are, so one level, what I picked up on some of this was just the context, the, the regional context. And the Caltrans letter, Department of Transportation, it's sort of suggests looking at tripling bicycle and doubling pedestrian and transit levels. So really, for this site, how, what can be done to make this something where essentially, I guess, the employees would be more inclined to use local facilities? And I'm talking about really the regional side. I'll ask the same question again of the, the applicant, when they come up for what can be done with that. But, I mean, these goals that have been talked about here, what impact does that have on Cotati? What has it have on this particular site?
So the project, there's kind of been similar conditions written for both this development and the adjacent development because of the tie with regards to the public improvements, and the city's need to get some of those done. And so there is a bus stop proposed directly in front of this site on 116. And that's, that bus stop is intended to encourage transit use both for residents but also regional folks, expanding the current public transit network. And then I would just look to our SEQA consultant to respond to any other specifics that are in the Caltrans letter, which is somewhat of a boilerplate letter, asking for general feedback on things that they typically look for, but.
Yeah, this is a pretty standard letter from Caltrans, sort of moving in the new direction, trying to, you know, encourage non-vehicle trips and getting, getting folks out of their cars and more using pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities. So, you know, when we looked at this under, under SEQA, what we look at is obviously what's there on the ground today, and then what is the, the ultimate plan for, for how Highway 116 is going to build out? And of course, there are planned bicycle routes and pedestrian connectivity tying the site not only to the marketplace next door, but also to, ultimately to, to downtown as well.
And it's worth noting, this project and the adjacent project have been conditioned to install full frontage improvements. So new sidewalks will be going in on every frontage of the project that has, you know, obviously, street access. And so in addition to installing and addressing the pedestrian circulation directly adjacent to their parcels, all these projects, or each of these projects, will be conditioned to pay into the city's traffic mitigation fund to allow the city to prioritize broader kind of citywide traffic improvements to enhance not just vehicular traffic, but also pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure.
So along those lines as well, and just thinking on the, talking about the big picture here, and how it would impact the SEQA analysis, this project has been done further out from what the current spaces. So anything that's done along that section of the road is really going to be isolated. It's not really connecting in with Cotati, with the current Cotati. I know it's within the urban growth boundary, and it's within the city limits, but how does it work from the SEQA analysis or any other analysis that really there are other properties closer in to town that don't have any sidewalks, won't be accessible? The issue I brought up earlier, that really their, the connectivity is very isolated at the moment. We do have a pedestrian and bicycle plan, but for the residents for this particular property, when it's built, it's not going to be, it doesn't appear to me, looking at this, that it's going to be very easy to connect it in.
Yeah, so I think it's, that's absolutely correct, that there's going to be an interim gap where basically until the, the frontage on marketplace builds out, you're not going to have that, that pedestrian connectivity at that location because the sidewalks are, are not there. So there is an interim period where until that, that frontage improvement happens on those other properties, that there will be a disconnect.
And so I would just add, you know, the developer is responsible for addressing their, the, the frontage requirements, including the pedestrian improvements adjacent to their parcel, and then they pay into the traffic fund to allow the city to address those regional or larger level issues. How this may work is if the, the site that's between the Cotati Villages and the, the Lowe's site, or the intersection of Redwood Highway, doesn't build out over a certain period of time. The city could move forward with an infrastructure project if that was prioritized in the capital improvement plan and build out that as if it was seen as a priority. I'm not saying that that would happen, but it's just, it's an idea that the city both gets the direct frontage improvements adjacent to development as it occurs, and then it also requires development to pay into the traffic fund to address those maybe broader or citywide issues that one individual development project can't be saddled with, but that the city can then use those funds to prioritize.
Right, but we haven't got any plan for, let's say, pedestrian connectivity along there either, or at least there isn't any, any short-term action items or for the planning department to look at, how we could get pedestrians walking along there, possibly through the Lowe's, connecting to the Lowe's site, or get some circulation for people who are in that area on a pedestrian basis?
There is no plan for that, other than the current bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
So on a, on the level of the, again, this, the SEQA analysis on the biological side, can you step us through what you see as the sequences that happen for the various permits to come through? So there's a, I think there's quite a few mitigations in here from bio one through bio five.
That's right, yeah. So there are a number of permits and certificates that are required to mitigate for biological impacts. They are required from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and from the Army Corps of Engineers. And that is essentially due to the filling of 0.06 acres of seasonal wetlands and the loss of habitat for California Tiger Salamander. So the process is that none of those permits can be issued until after the city has taken action on the SEQA document. And at that time, then, the applicant can proceed with submitting the applications to those regulatory agencies, and then they'll go through the process of securing those approvals and permits from the regulators. And the, those regulatory agencies will rely upon this SEQA document. And you will see that we received the comment from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, identifying a couple of clarifications and corrections, suggestions that they had to kind of bolster and supplement some of the mitigation measures that were drafted. And what was provided to you on the dais tonight is a revised mitigation monitoring and reporting program that shows a strike through an underline of what we're proposing to address those. So they're pretty focused and, and respond directly to what the comments that the department had put forward. And those are all in underline under the biological, there's no other changes to any other mitigation measures. And so those provide clarification. I can walk through those if that's helpful.
I think it would be, yes.
Okay.
Everybody else is.
So starting on page five.
Could you give us a PDF packet page?
This was provided separately from the packet, so this was on the dais tonight.
Okay, right, gotcha.
Okay. So mitigation measure bio four, you'll see the first paragraph is underlined, that reads purchase 7.28 acres of California Tiger Salamander mitigation credit. So that was added to clarify that indeed incidental take permit and compensatory credit will be required by the, by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then the rest of the mitigation remains as was drafted. Moving on to impact bio, mitigation measure bio five, at the bottom of page, or at the middle of page eight, you'll see a new paragraph was added. The Department of Fish and Wildlife requested that specific qualifications be provided for the biologists who are going to be conducting those surveys. And so that's been inserted here to clarify that they must have prior experience. On bio six, the department asked for a more narrowed window. So traditionally, it's been up to 15 days in advance for nesting bird surveys. They're moving towards a shorter timeline, but that can be really hard to meet with all of the construction, so that, there's a little bit of flexibility there. So we've revised that language to say, you know, no more than seven days, or with approval of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, up to 15 days in advance. And to clarify that indeed, the nesting bird surveys would also include not just raptors and passerines, but observation for any ground nesting as well, such as burrowing owls. And then, again, the language about having a qualified biologist and appropriate distances for setting back limits of disturbance for, should nests be identified, so 500 feet for, for raptors, for example. And that is the extent of the line item changes that were requested from the department and have been incorporated.
And staff would just ask, essentially, this document identifies and incorporates all the mitigation, in mitigation measures that the Fish and Wildlife Department have requested for mitigating the impacts of the biological resources on the property.
Thank you. Any?
I have a couple.
Okay.
So I have some questions about parking. So two ways to think about it, pre-cul-de-sac on Alder Avenue and post-cul-de-sac on Alder Avenue. Post-cul-de-sac, we would lose 10 parking spaces. That's somewhere in, in all of this. And it said that there would be 118 parking spaces. And then I narrowed it down from there. Per staffing for the assisted living and memory care, that would be 30, up to 30 people that would have to park. And then for staffing for the dispensary, that could be up to 10 people. So that could be an additional 10 parking spaces. So now we're down to 78. And then if it's post-cul-de-sac, we're down to 68. Assisted living residents will be 102. And those usually will have their own cars, maybe not all of them, but if we say 50% will have cars, that's 51 cars. Memory care clients usually don't have cars, they're not allowed to drive, but they do have visitors, as do the assisted living people. They do have home healthcare workers that come in. I'm pretty familiar with assisted living and memory care facilities, and they don't have a doctor on staff. They may have one nurse on staff, maybe. So a majority of some of the things that transpire health-wise happen in the unit by visiting nurses. That requires parking spaces for those people as well. So, and then the commercial, the estimate for the number of customers for the dispensary was 300 per day. So if we look at, sorry, I don't think that's quite right. Oh, yeah, that's right. And then if I'm thinking of a nine-hour day, they were open for nine hours, that would be an average of 33 spaces needed per hour. So you can see how those parking spaces are getting whittled down to almost nothing. So I'm pretty concerned about the number of parking spaces. And I'm wondering how the number that's required by the city is, how that number is, is come up with. with.
So the zoning code, the city zoning code does include these memory, or, sorry, memory care and assisted living facilities as an allowed use, just not in this district. And so the zoning code does have a prescribed amount of parking required for this use type, and this project does meet that. However, that concern is absolutely valid, especially given that the future cul-de-sac installation could eliminate additional parking. One of the ways that could address that would be for street parking to be, excuse me, street parking to be incorporated into the cul-de-sac design. That may not address your current need because that would be on the public right away and not on the private site. As we discussed at the last meeting, it's a little challenging to both address a current project and then a future need for infrastructure improvements that we don't have an absolute timeline on when it would be built regarding the cul-de-sac. However, the project as proposed does meet the prescriptive zoning code requirements for a generic commercial building and a assisted living facility.
Another question. I'm not sure that I'm satisfied with that answer, but moving on. Talking about tree mitigation, so I noticed that, and this was on page 286, the replacement required is 140 15-gallon Valley oaks and 28 other species for 15-gallon trees. And it did say also that there could be an INLU fee paid if not all of those were to be replanted. So my question is, how do you determine how many of those are going to be on-site and how many are allowed to be paid for or maybe planted elsewhere? And then I found that the 140 number, because there were references to other schedules, and in the impacted trees and mitigation schedule that was referred to, and it's on page 57 of the Biological Resource Analysis by Monk and Associates that was done on November 26th, Table A, that indicated that there would be 245 replacement oaks. And so I'm wondering what the difference is between that 140 number and the 245 number. And I think the other questions I have are for the applicant.
I'll take a look at the discrepancy there and see if I can give you an answer. I can't off the top of my head.
Do we want to wait for that answer? I would just say, in general, you know, the landscaping plan are finalized through the final designer view process. And I'm not going to speak to the discrepancy because I can't give you any information on that. However, generally, staff would work with the applicant to find adequate planting locations for as many of the onsite trees as possible. If they're not able to be fit on that location, then we would look to using the INLU fee, which pays into the city coffers, and then the city finds other locations to plant trees. I would say with regards to this and the parking concerns, if there's specific things that the planning commission would like to condition or recommend that the city council require, that can be added to the recommendation. And then, obviously, if one of the concerns was parking, for example, the direction could be that the applicant should seek to find other additional parking spaces on-site prior to final designer view or prior to submitting to the city council, something along those lines.
So we'll wait for that answer when it comes up. You can, it'll go into the works. I think that you're satisfied with that. So any more questions? It is a, it is a big complicated project with a number of things going on in the area, so I'm going to close the planning commission questions to staff and open it up to the public and invite the applicant to come up and talk about it and present it.
Thank you again, commissioners. Tom Monahan to present the project on behalf of the applicant. Maybe what I should do is walk through the project first, just to kind of give you a quick overview, because I'm not sure that you've fully seen the various features of the project. And then I think I can come back and address some of the questions that you've previously asked and answer any other questions that remain. So let me see if I can just move forward. So this is a view of the project, viewing from Highway 116 looking north. This is the corner of Highway 116 and Alder. There is a sign right here indicating the project. And then in the background, you can see the two-story, this area is a two-story assisted living project. There is a portco share entry drop-off right here. And we'll see more as we go through. This is a site planer which shows Highway 116 to the south here, Alder Avenue here. The project also provides for the concept that Alder Avenue may be closed. You can see this dotted in cul-de-sac that they think the commission was referring to. This is a future cul-de-sac. Right now, Alder continues to come through and connect to Highway 116. But in the city's general plan, there's a notion that someday Alder might be closed. We don't know when that might happen or if that would happen, but we've provided for that eventuality if it were to happen. If Alder were to close, there would be a new north-south road put in here. And so the project, the property line of the project is right along here, and we have set the project back in order that if someday this street were to occur and Alder be closed, then this project would provide an access to the north that would connect up to Helmand. Many other properties would have to fall in line with that idea, but we have, we have respected that notion in this, in this design. The property really will consist of two parcels. One parcel will be to the south, which is the commercial building. And then to the north, the assisted living property is, 88 units is in this area here. And then Memory Care is a one-story building in this area here. They are connected by, there is a passageway here, kind of an open space, and then covered connectors between the two. The project also has vehicular traffic pattern to the north along this edge here. Ultimately, that could connect into a future road here, but it provides for a fire department turnaround. There's a backup area here. It also provides the fire department to get access to the backside of the property. So we've worked with Rancho Wabu Fire Department, they approved that, that circulation plan. There's a bus stop provided for the project right in this area right here, not shown on this drawing, but it's provided really by the, by the Village Project, is slated to build that, but it would be located right in this area of the project. So there's public transportation right, right there. There is a trellis feature that kind of connects this area here, which we think encourages pedestrians and easy pedestrian circulation through the rest of the project. So the properties are meant to work together and to provide for, you know, good circulation, plenty of parking. And also, in the center area, I know there's a question, should we put more parking in? This design meets code and exceeds the code. The operator has looked at this and believes that there's more than adequate parking for the uses. There's some overlap between different uses, and I can more directly answer your question to that point. But this gives you kind of a good overview. There are courtyards inside each, this is kind of a circular resident room area here, also here, and this is an interior courtyard. So in terms of safety and residence safety, there's places for them to circulate, totally protected within the building itself. And I can come back and answer the question, I think, that you mentioned about, about resident safety. But just going through the kind of layout and design, let me go on to the next slide. So this is just a series of slides showing the architecture and the layout, the circulation. We tried to create a Crosswind-style design, which is, you know, deeply with Cattati's heritage and just the material and palette. Our soft colors blend in nicely to the, to the community. This also works well with the project next door, the Village Project, with complementary architecture and scale there. And I'll just go through a couple of these images, different angles. This is the, again, this is viewing more from the west looking east. This is the portco share drop-off area in the front. This is the two-story element. There's a little tower element in here to break up the architecture. The wall planes undulate. There's, you know, a lot of varied materials there. There are balconies on some of these, some of the resident units. And right around here, you can see where the building will step down to the, to the memory care area. This is another slide that we think we've already seen. This is a view looking to the west, so this is if you were standing in the, in the parking area. This is the commercial building here. Now, the scheduled to be cannabis dispensary area. And then you can see as you wander through the rest of the site, this is the portco share area located right here. So this gives you kind of a view to the rest. And the scale here is this is a one-story building stepping up to a two-story building. And I will show, this is a wider view, looking at the entirety of the frontage of the project from the corner of Alder and 116. This is from 116 looking, looking east. So you can see here, this is the commercial building here, which fronts, according to the city's code and the general plan, Gravenstein Highway, the city wanted a building right on the kind of sidewalk level. This would be a pedestrian connection here. Ultimately, that will connect through to the rest of downtown. Of course, we can't build the entirety of the sidewalk, but this is connecting to the Village sidewalk, which would be right across Alder down here. And then you can see landscape screening, large trees, and a lovely environment because there is a lot of green space that's provided in this plan. Next one, this is a close-up of the trellis area. This is looking kind of, if you were standing kind of on the corner of 116. And Alder, a little bit closer, this is a trellis area here, providing some shade and interest along, along the 116 corridor. Here is the commercial building. This also serves to screen the larger buildings that are to the, to the rear. So those buildings are set back considerably from the road. Let's see what else. Okay, that's another just long view of the same, kind of the same components of the project as viewed from 116. And then this again is a close-up of the, of the commercial building in the front and the scale, the pedestrian scale there. We're utilizing the city's acorn lighting fixtures for parking, so following the kind of vocabulary that's also used in the Village Project. Same kind of site furnitures and fixtures there. And again, back to the, the kind of corner. So that gives you kind of a quick overview of it. I've got more slides if there's any particular questions. So the project really came about from many, many years of discussing what to do with this property. We've owned this property for over 20 years. We've wanted to develop it. We've worked with the city as they've gone through their new general plan in 2015. And this was a use that staff and several other folks in the community, we did do outreach to the community, the cottages, folks have been involved in the decisions that we've been doing, we've been keeping them advised. There were other meetings a couple of years ago when the cannabis dispensary was being discussed. Those are all public hearings. We presented this project at that time, and this was seen to be a very desirable location for that particular type of use. It's kind of out to the west end of town, it's on the Gravenstein corridor. So we felt that that was a good, a good location, and the council agreed with us there. There was quite a bit of public discussion about that at that time. And of course, over the last four years, we've been working with staff to refine the design, to go through alternatives, and to try to come up with really the best possible plan. So we're very proud of the finished design. We understand tonight that, you know, your folks, you folks will be referring this to the city council, hopefully with a positive, positive recommendation of the project, and we welcome your questions.
Questions? You've got a good list there. We'll let you get on it and.
I always have a big list, sorry. So, same issue as with the villages about the trash enclosures, that it's currently only fitting two bins, and it needs to fit three bins so that there's trash, recycling, and green waste or compost. And that'll be especially important because of the food delivery system at the assisted living and memory care. So that's number one. Can that be incorporated?
Yes.
Thank you. A question about the trellises. Are those simply for aesthetics, or do they serve a purpose? What's under the trellis?
Mostly landscaping and pedestrian circulation. It's really just to break up the facade along 116.
It looked like, on site detail, A-15 of the colored plan, it looked like there were benches under the trellises. And I'm wondering if, to me, sitting there on 116 wouldn't be very conducive to relaxation. That's me personally. I would rather see that area used for additional parking, only because I think that's going to be an issue. So that's one thing. Also, I have a question. We didn't see the layout, the floor plan layout of the buildings, but I have a question about the elevator in the assisted living building, which is a two-story building. How big is that elevator? And there's going to be approximately 51 residents on the second floor, it looked like to me. And probably some portion of those, if not a quarter to a half, maybe more, would be using walkers and those mobility scooters. At least that, that's my experience when my mom lived in assisted living. And if the elevators aren't sized big enough, it may be an issue if an evacuation had to take place for those people on the second floor. So I'm curious to know how big that elevator is and how many people it can hold? How many with walkers or scooters can fit in that elevator? And what, what the plan is? Because they wouldn't be able to use the staircases. I saw that there were two staircases also. So that's, I have a question about the elevators.
Okay, my understanding is the elevator is a kind of extra-large size. It's what they call a gurney size for, for evacuation, so someone could easily get a full-size gurney in there. I can check on the actual size of that. There was some discussion about whether to have one big elevator or two elevators. The code requires one large elevator for, you know, med techs to be able to evacuate There's been some discussion about adding a second elevator, and that, obviously, at mealtime, if you've ever been to one of these facilities.
I have.
There's always a little bit of a rush to get into the elevator. The elevators are also kind of a premium, how close you are to the elevator.
Yes.
And so there was a discussion about perhaps having a second elevator, either in the front area of the project or the back area of the project. We haven't, we haven't decided, you know, finally, which way that would be. That's really an operational thing for staff. Generally, people are ambulatory and able to, to wander Generally, people are ambulatory and able to, to wander around on, on their own. We do have staff assistance to help people that need that. And so I think that's a great comment and I think we can, we can certainly look into that. But the, the elevator that is included in the current plan is, is a large elevator. I don't know the exact dimension, but it's probably eight by eight or something.
I just.
Probably pretty big.
I know from experience, from my mom being in both assisted living and memory care, that they had to get evacuated during the tubs fire. And it was not pretty, from what I understand. And I think with an eye towards safety, I would appreciate having a second elevator, maybe at the opposite corner from the, the one that's already planned. So that, that's my opinion, my concern. Let me keep going. I have a question about the fire engine and ambulance accessibility. And I saw that they can go around the back or they could go around into the regular parking lot. Can two of them go and turn around? So if you had an ambulance come in and a fire truck come in behind them, how would they maneuver to get out in a timely manner? I have, I have some concerns about accessibility. Also, I think that I would, I would appreciate that the, the secondary street, I think you, it was referred to as the new north-south collector street between Locust and Alder, that if that could be built as a temporary street or an EVA street, similar to, I know right over here, when the housing for Christiansen Homes, I think it was, or Christiansen Court up the hill from right here, they put in a, a special street that's just for emergency vehicles and those residents. So that's something that I would like to see, so that there's multiple access points for those emergency vehicles to get in. Because I know that, that's a huge consideration for people in memory care and assisted living. People are constantly falling. My mom fell and broke her neck. And really, the amount of minutes it takes to respond is critical. So from experience, I would like to have as much safety in that area as possible for emergency vehicles. Let's see what else. That's all I have.
Thanks for addressing some of the questions around safety as well. I have a couple follow-up questions. First, oh, just in regard to removing some of that seating area for parking. I agree, the parking is very important. I would just ask that we replace that somewhere else on the property. I think it's really important, especially for those sharing a space, that they have room to roam outside of their living area. So if that were something to be considered, I would just recommend that we make sure that we, we put that seating area further back on the property so that we, they don't lose that space. I, I had a question about, on the plans where it says future solar panels, just that word "future," is, is that just stating that's where we can anticipate solar panels will be located or will those be coming at a later date after development takes place?
I think the thinking at that point was to stub in for those solar panels. I don't know that we intended to, to include those. Generally, they go through a finer energy survey as you get closer to the final building permits. And they go through a Title 24 analysis. And sometimes, solar panels would be included at that point in time to meet the Cal Green energy standards. So I think they were just designating that as a place where they would appropriately go for exposure.
Okay, thank you. And then I was wondering if you could just give me, because I'm not an expert on how you develop a senior living community, I wanted to get a better idea of what sort of analysis goes into the development of what the needs are and, and what you include in an area like this to make it a, a healthy and positive living space for these community members. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that? And if not, I can be more specific about what I was looking at and where that question stems from.
Well, let, let me take a stab at that. So we identified the need for assisted living and memory care in this, in this area. The area is generally underserved in that, in this, in this area. The facility is thought to draw from an area about four or five miles as a kind of concentric ring. So there's a demographic study of, of population, age, age trends, people wanting to, generally people like to stay in the community that they're in. They call it aging in place. They like to stay, you know, in the town or the locale that they're in. And so we identified this as a, as a, as a nice opportunity for that. The corridor of Highway 116, of course, feeds out to Sebastopol and, and Highway 101 also feeds a broader area. So it's thought that it's also a, a good place for employment because you have a number of employees that are, you know, that are readily available, if you will. And so both from resident and staff, it was, it was a good location. Sometimes when you get further out and away from public transportation, it's very hard to get staff. And that increases their cost of transportation and things like that. So it's convenient so people whose, whose parents or loved one may be, they may live in Santa Rosa, but their parents may live here in Cattati. It's an easy, accessible location for them to, to visit.
Okay, thank you. That, that's really helpful to, to better understand what that process looks like. I, I really enjoyed seeing a lot of the walking space and the internal courtyards. I think that's a great idea. The only thing I thought that was missing here, if I could just give my opinion, is some sort of gym with a pool for exercise that is conducive to that community, that I know that's something that my grandmother uses all the time at her facility, is a pool where she can do her exercises. I don't know if I, I don't think I missed that, but I didn't see one there. So I would just add that as a note.
It's, it's a great idea and we, you know, we are a little bit tight on space. When you try to balance the parking and the transportation, circulation, all of the various uses, you start to get a little bit constrained. We did look at putting a pool in one of the courtyards and just the shape of the courtyard was a little bit tight to do that. And we just prioritize walking and, you know, having a kind of outdoor area there. But it is, it's, it's great aquatherapy and those types of things are great uses. We can certainly look and see if we can squeeze a little more space in for that.
Well, I would encourage it. And again, just any space that's available for the residents, especially those, I know for financial reasons, who need to share a room. It's so important that they have an opportunity to get out and go somewhere onsite and stay busy and healthy and active. So I would encourage it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got to echo a lot of the other comments here. I mean, I do like the, the look of it generally and the way that it's, it's being presented. But the placement, I mean, as we're looking at a design review here, and I, I guess one question first of all, when did you go out to the community to get input? Because I don't remember that. When did you go out with like a first review or a community input on?
I don't believe that we did a public noticed meeting, but we did reach out to neighbors and we've been talking to people in the area about the project for some time. This is probably the third or fourth iteration of the design that we've worked with staff back and forth. So those, those plans have evolved over quite a long period of time.
Okay, well, maybe explain to me from a safety point of view? And, and I'm just really looking at the openness of that and also speeding vehicles going by. So, I mean, there's no indicator, there's no helpful barriers, let's say, that somebody could be allowed to go out the independent and know that they're safe within a certain area, the, the walkways and the, the trellises. I mean, they look nice on the plans, but then right next to a speeding road with somebody who might just take off doesn't seem to me, I mean, it just seems very expensive to have to look after people all the time. So I'm just wondering what your, why that design has evolved? Is it, is it a requirement of the city to have that open or what is the thinking?
With regard to the terri, the trellis area?
Yeah, with regard to safety really, assuming that safety is going to be a really major part of anybody who wants to come in there.
Sure. Well, you know, there's always the opportunity to fence the entire site. And so the problem with doing that is then you start to create kind of a, a compound. And, and that also doesn't feel, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't feel great when you're inside and, you know, you feel those, those kind of fenced areas. Generally, people that are moving into these facilities are in their, you know, eighties, kind of mid-eighties. The average age is about 85. And people do tend to slow down then. They're not charging up in the morning and looking to jog around the, around the property. People who do want to go out, you know, have the opportunity to go out, it's not a, a locked campus. The memory, memory care area is restricted and delayed access and alarmed. So those folks are not really, they're considered potential flight risks, people who might get lost, they might wander off. So those folks are in a controlled environment. But the assisted living residents are, some of them are quite independent and they, they, they like their independence, they like the freedom to wander around, they don't want to, some of them have moved from, you know, their family homes and, you know, like that, like that freedom. This, this is an area where we, we have a, a bus that will transport people to town. It's a shuttle bus. And we actually now have a situation with Uber and Lyft where people, as, as Uber and Lyft have kind of evolved, people's families have accounts for them. And you can go to the front desk and punch in your, your request for an Uber and an Uber will show up and drive you to doctor's appointments or where have you. So these folks are still part of the community, they're in the community, they're, they're generally not a danger to themselves. And we have, our, our affiliated company is called Sterling Senior Communities and we have a 25-year operating history of many assisted living and, and memory care facilities. And we have a very good track record of safety and taking great care of, of our loved ones and families. And so we're, we're, you know, very experienced at doing that. These types of facilities want, tend to want to be in a, in a kind of quasi-commercial area like this. If you try to put this in the middle of a residential area, it's generally not, not liked there, it's generally not zoned for that. So this was, a lot of thought in, in planning went into the, into the thought of, in the design of the, of the facility. So we, we feel like it's going to be a great contribution to the community.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate, you know, that there's a lot of work gone into it. I mean, I don't know, I'm relating, there's a, there's a little old lady down the road from us. I mean, she's actually past 100 now, but she was walking her dog on the street for at least 10 years that I remember of, of, I think she's homebound. My mother got out on a wheelchair when she was actually in a wheelchair and she could zipper around and it was like, "Mom, slow down," you know, in the wheelchair, you know, because there's things there. So thinking of somebody like that here, I mean, really, I, I doesn't seem like the design in terms of the, the basic, simple way of channeling people into areas that would be perhaps more towards Hellman Lane or into across the road where there's a safer walking environment. I mean, that's what I would think from a, you know, in, in helping people to be independent. It would be how do you connect this with the neighborhood? And how do you provide the, you know, stay away from those very fast vehicles that are coming down the road and, and, you know, I mean, I think this is a big challenge for us in Cattati, this, this, this Highway 116 and how, you know, we've got all these general plan for that, how to work with safety along there. And I, I'm not too sure that really you've, it, it doesn't appear from the, the design plans, you know, that that's very safe on that. I don't think it would be a big deal to, to change it. But obviously, you've got a lot of footprints that you're designing in there. From, again, the employees, I know you mentioned those and I'm, I'm looking at how it connects in with the community. And, and you've had some, I mean, you were very involved in the earlier projects that didn't get built further along to the city. I mean, what does it take for employees to feel safe to arrive here on non-vehicular, you know, a lower-cost method? I mean, at the moment, everybody really needs a vehicle to arrive on this because it's kind of an island. So is there shower facilities for employees? Do you think, what would it take for the city to make a, a safer, easier connectivity with the neighborhood?
Well, we would love to see the rest of the project on the west side built out. The, obviously, the Lowe's project was built as part of that master plan. The cottages was built, but the rest of the, the marketplace, that retail concept of the master plan and the Village Project haven't been able to be built due to constraints that have been imposed on the project. And so the idea of connecting the pedestrian way on the frontage of both projects, now that the Village can move ahead, we're excited to get that going. So that will connect a frontage improvements all along Highway 116 up to where the, the marketplace project is. Once those frontage improvements connect in, they'll tie into the improvements at Redwood, Redwood Highway. On the other side, on the east side of the freeway, you know, that, that area also is, has been slated for development for a long time. So we would love to see that become very walkable, bike paths put in there. It's just, it's been difficult to develop in those for, for various reasons. But once those areas can develop, I think there'll be a, a nice network of, of pedestrian and, and bike paths through that area. In terms of the employees and staff, there is a bus, a bus pad right in front of the, in front of the building there. So that's a very safe and convenient location for folks. People do tend to carpool with one another. They ride-share, they get dropped off. You know, we, we like to hire locally. It's great if we can hire locally. We have a outreach program to young people that are in training, med techs and nurses, aides and people like that. So it's, it, it's a nice way for people that are in the community to have kind of some of their first jobs are in facilities like this. Those younger people can ride their bikes, can walk, can, you know, can arrive on their own, on their own accord.
And, and a shower for employees? Is there such a facilities? What are the facilities for people coming in? If they're coming in on a bicycle or they need to do a change to get into a professional attire?
Yes, we, we have a staff lounge area and that generally has a restroom and a shower facility.
Okay, good. How do you see for the future, looking at the, if, if there was the round, the, the cut, if it was, if Alder Elaine was cut off there, do you see that people would be trying to cut through this? Or how would you discourage people from wanting to get to the end of the, the bulb out there and not continue around and, and instead try and get through the facility out to the new lane?
In a car?
Yes.
Well, I imagine if the cul-de-sac were to be constructed, that it would be, you know, it would, it would be a curb and planting and landscaping. So it would be like, I, I don't know that anybody would be able to jump the curb and drive through there.
So there wouldn't be an access point to the facility? I mean, it looks like you've got an access at the moment. You've got a, a curb cut for people to come in. There's one access from that road, isn't there?
Along, are you?
So Elder Avenue at the moment, there's an access on that point. And Elder Avenue would be a cul-de-sac. And I mean, it's, I'm sure there's lots of. be a cul-de-sac and, I mean, it's, I'm sure there's lots of good ways of doing it, but I'm just sort of raising the thing that if there was something put in there, you really wouldn't want to let people think there was a cut through.
Exactly. I don't, I don't, I don't think, if and when that were to happen, I don't think anyone would try to drive a vehicle through there, they might walk through there.
So it would be saying from Alder Avenue-
Let me, maybe I don't understand your question, let me see if I can-
It's, I mean, maybe I'll just put it out there, it doesn't have to be addressed now because it would be very much in the future, but it would be the same that there's, it looks like. I think I covered about the safety, the trash is good. I think that's really me, I mean, I appreciate there's a lot of work gone in there, I'm a bit surprised, we, we did have a very much a hotel outreach earlier this year that I think was successful, people introducing the project and getting ideas from it, so this being the first major public review, I just, I mean, it's a new process for us, but I hope we can actually get more early input to this so that it could actually address some of these questions, you know, before you go into doing all the layout and the work and stuff.
Sure.
But how the, how the connectivity works, it just seems like it's an example of, of where we're doing these little designs and not really looking at how it, you know, about how the neighborhood's going to work or how it can, especially when it's being built out slowly. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? No, okay, well, I'll open it up for public comment. So Jenny? Oh, could we just take a, let's, actually, let's go on, are you okay Steve with waiting? Or, let's, let's have the public comment and then let's recess. So we'll take public comment and then I'll, I'll call a recess for five minutes after that.
First of all, I had the same thought about public outreach. There were several mentions of a number of reviews having happened since 2015, but I hadn't heard about any that were publicly noticed. And I also thought about the hotel project and how there was a meeting here with all the maps and diagrams laid out, all the consultants here for people to speak to and the room was buzzing with people asking questions and providing creative ideas and I wonder if you could do something like that. Second, there were a couple of mentions of the marketplace next door and I realized I wasn't sure if that's something, that's not part of the project that you talked about earlier this evening, that's not part of this, or is it the cannabis dispensary? I wasn't sure what that was now, so I wonder if somebody could clarify that. And then I'm really puzzled about how this project on this site could be quote tiered off the South Sonoma Business Park EIR two thousand and one. It's different land, it's a totally different use, there would be different uses for water, sewage, et cetera. If the full EIR was warranted for the South Sonoma Business Park site then, why wouldn't it be now? There are wetlands, there's not only California tiger salamander habit, habitat, there's valley oak savanna, and there were many reasons for the EIR, many, many different reasons to have a full EIR. Why not here? It's, it's starting all over on a fresh site on land that hasn't been developed before except for this, for the relatively small part about, around Reds Recovery Room. Next, I'm really puzzled about the cannabis dispensary, again, a completely new use. Is it compatible with this assisted living center? Would the customers be from there or would they be from outside? And in which case, what happens about traffic and parking from customers coming in from elsewhere? And there was a question about having a pool or exercise rooms on the site, could that be where this dispensary is going to be? Or could there be something like a mini mart or a small grocery store for the residents and employees and visitors? Or could there be residences for the employees or some of them on site? And also I wondered if anyone had really looked at the pros and cons of a cannabis dispensary, having a second one in Khatati, how that is or isn't working, I don't know anything about that, and comparisons with other cannabis dispensaries nearby. I had a question about solar panels at the Kaiser Buildings north of Santa Rosa off Bicentennial, all the car, car parking places have solar panels over them and electric vehicle charging is supplied in quite a few of them. Could there be something like that? And lastly, on the landscaping pictures, there was quite a lot of what looked like green lawn and while some of that might be appropriate in some places, I'm assuming that actually the use, there'd be a lot more use of native plants and low water plants with requests for, yeah, low water use rather than having lawns. I think that's it. But really my biggest question is about that particular site to start with in the first place and then public outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Christopher Crenmore, I reside over in the cottages. We've actually been back and forth with Tom on the project, yeah, two thousand fourteen, fifteen he approached us, just to kind of get our concept and he meets with our homeowners' association probably every other year since we've been built, just kind, kind of giving us updates on the village and the marketplace and Reds. As a resident over there, we find Reds is an eyesore, one, it's a huge hazard right now with homeless and dumping, so we'd love to see something happen with it. General consensus over there, everybody, there was no negative comments when we talked about it. Our biggest concern, just like you guys, parking, we are already limited in parking in the, the cottages as it is and when you add the village, might be, or the bungalows, you might have a little bit less parking, but with the commercial up front and overflow, that'll be great. Just a comment on the mini mart, I'm hoping that the commercial spot in the bungalows has some sort of store or the marketplace adds some sort of grocery store for our side of town so that I don't have to travel to Ronard Park to do groceries because there's too many stoplights from my house to Oliver's FYI. But that's generally speaking, those, we like the concept, it is, it is new and I, I actually like the idea of opening it up for public comment because I don't think, but it hasn't had that review that I know of. I know that we got notified about permits, but I think it was just the dispensary, not, not the whole project, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to take a, a break, oh, sorry, if you'd like to come up and, public comment.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Coleman and I own a property at seventy-eight twenty-nine Rivard Court in the Khatati cottages, so, let me just pull up my notes here. First of all, I just really want to say that I, I appreciate how much work has gone into this because it's monumental and I've managed property for twenty-six years and I can't even imagine coming close to everything that's gone into this. So I will say with the, the woman back here, I think is, with everything that would be considered equal in temper, in measurement, that if an EIR hasn't been done, I know, I'm sorry, I really, no, that's just the worst word to say sometimes in these circles, it's, it's a door that swings both ways, but if there wasn't one done for this project and for another, then I'd like to understand why. That would be important to me, but other than that, I, I do somewhat feel like I'm beginning to support this project. I'm new on board, so I'm really trying to catch up fast. So here's my questions. The measured setback, the actual measured setback in feet from Highway one sixteen to the sidewalk to look really attractive in your, in your presentation, is that, is that measured in feet? Do you have an amount of, of linear feet setback? I'd like to see a wide setback from the Highway one sixteen to, with the grass and then the sidewalk, that would be attractive to me. It seems like, I may be ignorant about this, but this has always been zoned, I need to be corrected here if I'm wrong, commercial versus residential, this area for the memory care aging center. I, I'm under the impression that the bungalows were zoned residential, commercial or industrial, but that they chose to develop residential there. And while I would like to see residential units go in where the memory and aging care center is, I also understand that life is real and things have to happen and develop and people cannot be held like builders on the tarmac forever and a day, being held to have to keep coming back over and over and over again. Can you imagine having property for this long and not being able to have to keep coming back to not be able to develop it? I, I understand both sides. So then obviously I'm hoping there will be a stoplight at Alder Lane, again, I'm just getting on board so to speak. I would like that because I don't relish the idea of all this traffic coming through on there without a stoplight and I really hope that other street on the other side of the building, memory and aging care center would go in because I really just don't want to look at any traffic coming in on that street other than our neighborhood traffic, period. I really have to put my foot down on that one, I just want all that commercial traffic diverted to the other side. I don't want to look at it on our street. I'm sorry, that's being NIMBY, but I, I want, if this project goes in next door, great, please just spare us the traffic. And then, let's see, so I'm just reading my notes here, so what are the guarantees of the new proposed north and south road? Okay, I already went over that. Will actually go in, that will come to fruition. And, let's see, okay, they are the cannabis, the cannabis facility. Okay, I'm going to go on all in here, but it looks like because it's incorporated into the design of the memory and care aging center that it's expressly meant to go for the memory and caring center, which I think is pretty groovy, but I also think that we would just have one down the street and so it looks a little suspicious that it's, you know, wrapped in with the development. I, I just want to get more clarity on that, it's not a judgment at all. Okay. Okay, looks like you're going to have a lot of greenery and grass and I love grassy areas, even though it's totally incorrect politically and water-wise, but I do love the grassy areas and I don't know if that's going to stay. I know that if it has to go, it would be reasonable to put in drought resistant plantings there. And that's, oh, and also I love the trellis aesthetics and I would never want to see a fence go in there because I understand the architectural aesthetics of having to please the eye and I do not want to look at a fence. So thank you very much for listening to all my comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. So what we'll do now is we've got those questions and our staff are building up a list of them, but we'll take a short break for ten minutes, we'll come back at twenty-five to ten and, or how much do we need? Do we need five minutes? Let's come back at, yeah, twenty-five to ten, does that work? And, so I'm going to call this, we'll have to take a break, thank you. And commission and bring it back to staff for those questions that were being asked.
Thank you Chair Hancock and Commission and members of the public. Just responding to some of the comments, I'm going to take a first response and then I'm going to ask our secret consultant to address some of the more specific questions. Regarding the process and more public input, you know, this project has been within the city's review for four years approximately, no kind of pre-application, applications or reviews occurred with the public. Staff cannot confirm whether a pre-application, or I'm sorry, a notice of application went out to surrounding residents. However, the concepts were presented in a public setting when the cannabis application was approved by the city council over a year ago. The documents have been available on the city's website for several months and the notification for the environmental document was made in late June. So that's the information I can provide on what has been done to garner public input and then staff will speak a little bit more to kind of general public input and process during the department report because we do have some improvements we'd like to make to that process for development here in town. Specifically regarding other uses in the commercial building, if the commercial building's approved, any uses that are allowed in the zoning district could move in there, however, it is, should be noted that a cannabis permit has been approved for that location, that's not before the planning commission, that's not within your purview, those decisions are made by the city council and that doc, or that decision has been made previously. Ms. Irving, we'll be discussing how the project, or why the project did tier off of some of that previous environmental work, however, it's worth noting that this is a standalone sequel analysis, fully meeting the requirements of the law and identifying all potential impacts of the project. So there are some specific conditions regarding EV charging onsite and solar panels onsite, so I would just point out condition number seventy-nine, which is on packet page four oh three, specifically requires that ten percent of the project's electricity use be offset through the installation of PV panels. Further, conditions seventy-five and seventy-six require the installation of electric vehicle chargers as are shown on the site plan, including one, minimum of one to serve the commercial building. With regards to the tree preservation and identified numbers on the planting plan, so staff doesn't have a, a absolute answer as to why there's some discrepancy. If you look at the proposed landscape plan, there are a number of larger trees than fifteen gallons, some twenty-four inch box and some thirty-six inch box. Typically, there's ratios incorporated into the tree removal, I'm sorry, the tree, tree, the tree ordinance, which included, includes replacement ratios and as you increase the size of those trees, it counts a greater number of individual trees, so that could have been the case. We also in looking at it identified that that had been revised and so potentially the original analysis wasn't based on the most up-to-date information. However, staff can and will ensure that the tree replacement and mitigation requirements are done in keeping with the requirements of the city. And if you look at conditions eighty-two through, well, eighty-two through eighty-four, but there's a number of sub-re requirements and then eighty-five through eighty-eight, which address landscaping, those begin on packet page four oh three. There's a number of requirements regarding tree preservation and mitigation for tree removal, so that, those have been included into the project's proposed conditions of approval. Currently, the setback from one sixteen is identified as approximately fifty feet. That's because it, the four-lane highway hasn't been improved. Once the four-lane improvements are constructed, that would cut down to between twenty and thirty feet. We don't have a set number because we don't have a full-size plan that we can scale, but there is a significant setback from the edge of the highway to those buildings and the seating areas, which staff did identify as being an important amenity. However, we do recognize the concern over parking and absolutely will look for opportunities to provide more parking if the commission chooses to condition the project to do so. That's all of the specific, oh, I'm sorry. With regards to lawn and low water use, the, the project would be subject to the water-efficient landscape ordinance requirements, which do allow some lawn, but the overall project will be limited to a water budget and all planting areas will have to meet that requirement. So if they choose to plant a lawn in one area, they'll have to offset that water use in other areas, so there will be significant amount of drought tolerant and water efficient plantings as a part of the ultimate improvements. And then with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Irving to talk about some of the sequel questions.
Thanks Noah. I just wanted to provide some clarification on the comments that were raised regarding tiering and the statement about, some of the statements regarding EIR being desired for this analysis. So on the tiering item, tiering is a tool that's specifically identified under the SEQA guidelines to allow a way to streamline and sort of have an abbreviated discussion because the discussion or the impact or the assessment has already been conducted in a prior- has already been conducted in a prior environmental analysis. So tiering works when you have a programmatic EIR or another EIR that covers a certain element of the project. So in this case, this project tiers from the general plan, EIR, that was recently certified a couple of years ago. And it also tiers from the South Sonoma Business Park, EIR. And the reason it does that is twofold. The, there was two addendums done to the South Sonoma Business Park, EIR, starting in 2003, where there was a number of widening for Hellman Lane, Alder Avenue. And so because Alder Avenue is directly tied to this, this tiers from that addendum. And then also, then subsequently in 2006, the second addendum to the South Sonoma Business Park was taken. And that identified the improvements along Highway 116 for the ultimate widening of that roadway. And again, this has frontage on that roadway and has relevance because of that nexus there. So it does not in any way take any shortcuts or have any abbreviated discussion. As you can see, it's a very robust analysis that goes through each of the environmental checklist and provides additional context under today's condition. But it does, for purposes of reference, make note that there are these other documents that are relevant. And so that's the kind of, the whole point of tiering. And then in terms of the statements about having an EIR for this project, an EIR is really triggered when you have a significant and unavoidable impact. And we went through the initial study checklist, looked at all of the impact criteria, and none of those rose to that level. And there's a couple of comparisons I can make between why an EIR was required for the South Sonoma Business Park and why an MND was determined to be adequate at the staff level for this assisted living project. And it's also important to note that the context of the site is one where there have been past uses. It's been historically used for agriculture. And then there is a number, there's a prior residence onsite as well as the Reds. So a large portion of the site has been previously impacted, graded. There's been disking, various activities out of there that, out there that, over the years, have altered the natural environment out there. So this is very much, you know, a, maybe not a redevelopment site, but it's certainly been previously impacted. And the, you know, the sensitive habitat that's on there is, again, I said this before, but it's .06 acres, so it's a very small wetland that is kind of triggering all of the biological impacts. Another thing I wanted to point out is that the EIR that was done for the South Sonoma Business Park, that was a 35-acre development with, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet of development. This, in comparison, is a five-acre site, and it is largely consistent with and anticipated by the current general plan that was just recently had the EIR certified. And so that's the reason why the MND was determined to be the appropriate level of document for this project. I'm happy to answer any other questions if there's follow-up items.
Thank you. So is that all the questions that we have?
Mr. Chairman, I can touch on the trellis question that came up. There is a code requirement for all the frontages in this particular corridor to take up, that the building frontage take up 100% of the, of the street frontage there. So we spent some time looking at different ways we could approach the site there, including moving the whole assisted living facility right up to the street, which ultimately we decided was not desirable. And then it worked much better the way it's placed towards the back of the property there. The commercial building, to take up that whole frontage, would have to be quite large, which, one, we don't have enough room on that site to build the assisted living plus the long commercial building or the parking for it. So that's the place there. So the code gives you an out for reducing the amount of building frontage. And one of the ways you can do it, you can either phase a project where you're going to build a commercial building later that will provide 100% frontage, or you can put in pedestrian plaza. So that's where we started to approach the pedestrian activity. And also, we have a requirement to screen parking. So we didn't want parking coming right up to the street there. So the idea was, this served us well because, one, we wanted to start to create pedestrian connections between the commercial buildings along the Gravenstein frontage. We are looking to the future and how all this is going to connect all the way to Lowe's, Redwood Highway. And we know we need to develop some sort of commercial pedestrian corridor along that frontage way. So that's where we started to take that approach. And we went to the trellis, was like, well, we don't have building, but let's put something visually interesting in that area, more than just a sidewalk. And provide something that adds and complements the landscaping. So that's the approach, that's why that ended up in there. It wasn't just an afterthought or a tag on. It's how we dealt with that code provision. And I can talk a little more about it, but it was a good question, I think, about how that project element appeared there. And also, I don't think we could relocate it. There was another suggestion to relocate it. That would be a significant change. We really did squeeze the project with the EV access along the back, and then also on the side as well. There's a lot of landscaping, like, you know, 150 trees we're trying to replace approximately. So moving that particular, if you look, there's a lot of little tiny sidewalks, but, you know, we did want something down there that is going to be right there serving the bus station, the bus stop as well. So, I don't know, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Have we addressed all the other questions?
I had a question. Is the parking summary found on Title Sheet A1 current and correct?
Yes.
So all the discussion about parking is moot if we have hit the requirements. Is that correct?
The parking that's provided meets the requirement. That is correct.
So any more questions, staff? I'd like to just ask more about that, the trellis. And I appreciate the visual side from the road. But my concern is more of the, just the openness that that provides and the safety with the road, considering the type of, considering that we're going to have people who are frail and really would like to have a place where, I mean, my vision would be some place in that neighborhood where people would get out, be able to get out more, walk along Alder Lane. And so, I mean, it just doesn't seem to work too much, that idea of having benches along there. I mean, I like the trellis as a visual sort of break, but what did you think about, what did you come up with in terms of safety and pedestrian? I mean, I don't think really in the pedestrian plan, we've considered this as a source of places. I mean, this is a new, a new thinking about this being a place where people would walk out from and...
Well, it's 30 feet from the roadway. That's not a substantial amount, but it's still, you know, you're not right on the road's edge there where those particular benches are. We didn't view it as a safety problem. I think we were looking at more as an aesthetic problem and serving the bus stop area, you know, providing an attractive place in that area. I think that's about all I can say on that. And then Alder will have its street-side improvements with the sidewalks and the bike lanes. Actually, no, I think just sidewalks there.
Okay, thank you. So shall I close this and bring it back to the committee, or is there any more questions for staff? So bringing it back, closing it, I guess, just asking it back to the committee for discussion. And I guess I'd just like to know how Steve's feeling on this, what you sort of feel, having heard it. Do you want it to...
I maintain that I cannot support this project until I've had more time to study it, with apologies to the developer and to the commission, but I'm not prepared.
Okay, thank you for that input.
I'd like to then move to continue this, this topic, this agenda item until our next meeting. That would give the public more of a chance to weigh in, and it would give possibly two more commissioners a vote. That would be not the 2nd of September, but the... Thank you, 16th of September. It was a large packet of information to digest in three days. So that's what I'm moving.
So I'd like to hold that move, and I agree with that. I just want to ask staff, is there, can we actually reach out to more people to let them know about this for the next meeting?
So typically, if a project is, I mean, we noticed this project to all property owners within 500 feet and put in the newspaper. So typically, if a project is continued to a date certain, you do not renotice it because the idea is that folks who are interested got the original notice and would be here or at least watching to attend the meeting. However, if the direction of the commission is to renotice with that date specific, absolutely, we can do that. And if there's additional ways that the commission is interested in staff trying to engage, we are happy to do so. I think, based on anecdotal information, there's been some lively discussions in the community on social media about this project and these developments. So I think, you know, folks are aware that these projects are moving forward through the process. And again, just, I know there's been a lot of discussion on social media. But we can absolutely move to try to address any concern the commission has over public engagement or noticing, and make all efforts to ensure that everyone who's interested has a chance to participate.
Thank you. Would you like to amend your motion to include that?
No.
So just to...
Just to have it continued to that date specific.
Anybody seconding it? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the excellent overview. And we'll have the next meeting, 16th of...
16th.
Of September, because we have Labor Day in between.
Right.
So Monday, the 16th. Well, I certainly appreciate the time to, it's been a hard, a heavy lift to... Thanks, Jim. Yeah, so, I know, we're still going through this meeting here. So we're going on to the next meeting, the next item, which is not on the list, but I guess it's... There we go, reports by staff.
Thank you. Just briefly, just briefly, with regards to kind of public engagement and public involvement, staff is absolutely understanding and aware of some of the concerns that the commission's been voicing with this. And we will look to ways that we can expand our public engagement and early involvement. We're looking at enhancing the amount of information that's currently provided on the city's website about individual projects, ensuring that all projects of any substantial size get a notice of application with a link to the project plans that are being, that will be provided digitally to all folks to make sure they have access to that information. Along those same lines, we will also endeavor to provide the planning commission with all this volume of information 10 days ahead of the meeting. So we'd like to publish a week before we did with projects of this size and scale. With myself just getting kind of ramped up and working in the department, we weren't able to meet that goal with this project. However, we absolutely will with any future substantial project. So just be aware of that as a commission and any members of the public listening at home. Just know that we will absolutely move forward with trying to get some more time to allow the commission and the public to understand and review the information because I absolutely understand it's a lot in a relatively short period of time under the current process.
Very much appreciate that. I mean, I think the hotel project was a success in the way it was initially presented somewhat informally, but it had a lot of people who got to see it, and people appreciated that as well. This is different, but, you know, having a venue like that would be valuable.
Great. So staff will look for a lot of opportunities to do that with the commission and the public both. Just reminding everyone listening at home, the September 2nd meeting is canceled as it falls on Labor Day. So we, our next scheduled meeting will be September 16th, and we will be rehearing this item at a public hearing and also listening to the city's CIP. So that will be brought before the commission to be reviewed for conformance of the general plan. And then just finally, staff, to kind of improve some of the efficiency and look for opportunities where we can use our staff a little bit more effectively. We're looking to move to action minutes for the planning commission, similar to how the city council records their minutes and actions. I'll work with the secretary to ensure that the information that's conveyed in the minutes is still accurate and obviously tells the record of what occurred. But currently, right now, it's a substantial lift to create those minutes. And frankly, it's kind of an antiquated method of keeping records, given that we broadcast all of our meetings and it's available for folks to watch and re-watch later if they are not able to participate. So look for those changes coming. And staff's absolutely interested in hearing any more interested, or interested changes that the commission has, and when we have a discussion regarding bylaws and kind of some of the other things that we've teed up. With that, that concludes the department report.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd just like to, we didn't get to do this last time, but welcome Commissioner McKinney. Is that how you say it?
McKinney.
McKinney, I'm sorry, McKinney.
It's okay.
Welcome on board. Would you like to say anything about...
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I just, I want to reiterate that it's a joy to be a part of this commission. I feel incredibly lucky and grateful that I can sit here and review all this information, ask questions, hear from the public of their opinions, and hopefully alongside this group, make some good decisions for our community. So I just want to say thank you again for having me and allowing me to be in this role.
Well, after this two meetings, we haven't scared you off. You've been inducted by fire. So any other commissioner reports? And I don't have anything either. So I'll call this planning commission on, what do we, August 19th to a close. Thank you very much.